Nice, very problem. All right. Hello, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education. Special meeting to order. It is five o'clock Tuesday, twenty first, if we could stand for the pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag. So our main item on the agenda tonight is a superintendent's report by Dr. Cook about the pre-K five related arts. Model presentation. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Cook.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kelly. The presentation is up. I do have to scroll over it, so. And just for the the public, I'm pleased to report that the board approved the superintendent and administration's proposed budget tonight at two point four seven percent. Rate and that included additional positions that I will speak to tonight through this presentation. So thank you for the board for that approval. It was approved on a nine oh one. So we are. Grouped on the on the budget, which is a major milestone of our our school year. Wanted to take some time to present the pre-K of five model tonight for the the Board of Education. The board has received this presentation previously. You know, prior to prior to tonight, but has not received it in a presentation for that. First slide I wanted to share was the timeline and and where we stand in terms of communications as of as of now. The model was developed over. The spring and into the the summer of of twenty twenty four. As I've shared previously, I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but as I shared previously. We were waiting for the teacher's contract to be negotiated finalized. That did not occur until the thirty days passed at the. Board of Finance level. And so that passed around mid-November. Our plan had been to communicate the assignments and model to the. Teachers in January, but it was moved up to November after many requests from teachers and discussions and wanted to. You know, kind of recognize that the 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 concern and 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 stress that that provides not knowing where. Teachers would be placed next year. So we were able to give them tentative assignments in November. We moved on, then to the budget process and the budget. You know, presented tonight to the or finalized by the by the board does put us in a great place in terms of those assignments that was communicated to to teachers. And now we're in an information sharing with the public, starting or a big part of that is tonight, but then also Thursday of this week. The principals will be presenting the. Model in additional information specifically for fourth grade parents, current fourth grade parents, and then later on. For parents at Jeffrey and Ryerson on March third. In terms of where the draft model was to the new model tonight, I just wanted to highlight where things. Stand. There's no change from the again, this is from the twenty twenty four draft model to where we where we are tonight. No change in P. I think our our family is very satisfied. And administration feels very good about where we are with with P. There's no change in art or music from again. This was the the draft model to where we where we stand. Also for. Steam and and computers. There's no change from from where we were. In terms of the the changes, we have added back for all students in grade five, eighteen lessons in in theater. We've increased Spanish in fourth and fifth grade for. One from one time a week to two times a week. So seventy two days of of Spanish instruction. Art has decreased, but not completely. It's pretty much where we, excuse me, library. Pretty much where we stand now for for library, where teachers work directly with the library media specialists and schedule time in the in the library. So that will be. The same as current, but it is a decrease from what the model was presented. And then being in orchestra, we're we're excited where this. Landed as well and that it will be continued to be a one time per week. All year round, but we'll also have ensembles and we increase the time for the elective, but also for the. On ensembles that represents a a change in terms of where we were. And additional times for that. So that brings back something a model that we're in in the eighteen nineteen year. In terms of where we were specifically for the grade levels, like this is, this is important to review. Looking again from where we were eighteen nineteen to to current. So really what we're we're mostly focused on was present to current because. And we've been in the the Brown model for, you know, about six years and want to look at. And provide families with those those changes. Again, P, two times per week, art, one time a week, all all year. Or this is K to three, music, one time per week all year. STEM and computers is an increase for arcade three students, so they will be receiving. STEM and this is a great way to also provide them science instruction through that. So we're excited about that. And Spanish is pretty much the same as what they're they're receiving now with a little little bit more for kindergarten and a a book to provide some for pre-K as as well as we. We move forward. Library is a is an increase where it'd be a scheduled time for our students in K through three. In terms of fourth grade. Again, P, you know, every few times a week from every every other day this year, but it is a pretty significant commitment to P. Instruction for grades four. Art is, you know, one time per week. Music in Xylos, one time per week. Xylos becomes part of the new general music instruction. And so it is a decrease. Over time of music and Xylos, but it is an increase in general music. And it does include the the Xylos as part of that. Steam, computers. This is a one time per week all year for for steam. And coding will be part of that instructional model. Theater will not be offered in fourth grade. Spanish will be two times per week. So we're pretty similar to where we stand right now in Spanish. And then library is similar to when you look at it current, next year, it's basically the same as it is right now. So there's no change in in library for our fourth graders. In terms of our fifth graders, again, P, two times per week, one time a week for for libraries. So there's, excuse me, art. An increase in in art to thirty six days. Music in Xylos, one time per week. Xylos becomes part of the general music. Time period. Scheme and computers, one time per week all year. So it's an increase in the steam piece that includes coding down. Theater with the eighteen lessons per per year. Right now it's thirty thirty lessons, so eighteen lessons per year in in theater. So it's a. It is a decrease, but we're we're looking at other ways to augment that, whether it be after school or other opportunities for students in that area. Spanish becomes two times per week in this new model. Band and orchestra is basically, as I as I explained it, with the. You know, elective all all year round, but the ensembles is a is an increase of where we are currently. So that's was very well received by music. Leadership when when you know, shared that with them. And then library is same as current. So scheduled by the by the teacher, no change in in library. The final summary slide of of the of the changes again from the draft to to the new model. We did, as as the board knows, as the public knows, receive a lot of feedback from parents and took that into. Great account or very appreciative of all the information we received. I think it was. You know, excellent, right to the point in in terms of what they were concerned with, students leaving, losing. We heard from students, which was fantastic. We know that word. Does not appear from students. So we were very pleased to receive that that feedback and. The central office and building administration met several times, you know, during the the last two weeks to to review and talk spoke directly with teachers and it was. Really a a good process, you know, we're really pleased as as I speak for the administration. Both the office and building were very pleased with where we stand today. In terms of terms of Spanish, as I mentioned, you know, increasing that doubling the Spanish is is what we looked at. We wanted to maintain where we we. Wanted to be pre-kated three. We didn't receive many much feedback in terms of where we stood pre-kated three. It was really in the in the grades four or five, and we received some feedback since that. Parents were pleased with that increase in in Spanish back to, you know, pretty close to where we are right now. As I mentioned, being in orchestra, there's pretty significant increases to that commitment to that. So we're pleased and receiving good good feedback on that. Theater, the eighteen lessons per year in grade five, also some good feedback. I think the big piece on theater that we heard. Was that it needed to be a model where all students received it. It wasn't something where it was an elective, because we looked originally at elective options for for students in. Grades five and wanted to come out with something where all students received that. So where we could look at elective options. That, you know, after school would be in grades four and five. So like I said, to kind of augment that. And then in core subjects, in order to do this, we did reduce, you know, social studies and science from what we were looking at. But we do feel that, you know, we'll be in a good place with with that. As I mentioned, science would be received through through STEM, so we can. You know, increase instruction in that area, making it a, you know, a really new theme, you know, curriculum for that. And then, as I mentioned a few times, the staffing additions. So one world language teacher and additional. Music and theater, which have more improved tonight. So we're in a in a great place and we've had those conversations with staff members that who were excited to receive that. That new so. You know, confident that we can deliver that because some of that was staff independent. In terms of future considerations. So this is our next level of work. As I mentioned, Thursday night was the presentation for fourth grade families. So that will. You know, provide an opportunity for question and answer for families to provide it. But you get to receive our information from. From that. I know there's lots of lots of questions still to be answered on in that area, but. We're still working on determining student transitions within the building, because we heard a lot about requests for that, students switching groups for related arts. We're looking into that as well. I just want to be clear that that is much more difficult in the building, you know, when you have pre-kated five in the same building. So there's a lot of. Moving parts in that, whereas currently at Brown, as families know, we stop core instruction and the whole fourth grade goes at the same time. To specials. That will not necessarily happen in those buildings because of scheduling. So there's a lot more to work on that, but I just wanted to be. You know, sure, families were still working on that. I know there'll be some additional information sharing Thursday night regarding, you know, where that where that stands. Schedules, bell time, start time, you know, pretty much bell time, I will say, is pretty much finalized. We're we're looking to. Share that with families on on Thursday. And then before and after care time is something we've heard a lot about as well. And. You know, I know one of the questions we received is, you know, special ed IP five oh four. You know, agreements and and contracts and where that stands. And so that would be implemented, you know, and adjusted just in terms of the the language, but those. Do supersede on any model. So that if there's something that we've told families and students, we're going to provide them, that would be continued to be provided. You know, moving moving forward and there'll be those meetings coming up at the end of the the school year, but. The model itself doesn't get in the way of of that providing, you know, IP five oh fours to students. You know, I've mentioned it several times, grade four meeting is Thursday. The Jeffrey and Ryerson meetings are on March third. All at six o'clock, the the grade four meeting is at six o'clock in the at Brown at the auditorium. So that concludes my report. I know the board's seen this, but I haven't received any questions, but I'm going to have to answer any questions. Have Kale, Frank Anderson here to help me out if I can't answer it. We'll open it up to anybody in the board who has a question or wants to discuss something.
Although I just appreciate the time and effort that has gone into this from the beginning and throughout my generations and feedback from the community and having such engaged. Parents and students. One thing looking through this, having kids who both went through ground somewhat recently is I do like that some of those related arts like. Music scene are all year, not just clumped into one trimester. Just sort of to have that consistency over the school year. I do like that. And I think that could be a nice improvement for kids. So. I appreciate all the effort from everyone else who put into this.
Yeah, that was something we've heard from music teachers as concerns over the years and that if you have a student that has. Music first trimester and then maybe not for a long time until fifth grade, there's a a large gap in times of music and. Students could, their concerns, students could lose interest in that. So I think having a full year is a preferred model, you know, given your choice.
Two things. So one, I'd like to thank the administration and Dr. Cook for working so hard to modify the model that they had already worked hard on. And, you know, not everyone is going to be happy and. You do the best you can. And I hope that, you know, that everyone sort of takes it. As a trial model to see how it goes. It's a new school with, you know, a new set of grades in it. And there's going to be a lot of. I think getting used to how things work. So we'll wait to hear from the teachers and the administration on how well they think that this model is working. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's, you know, great engraved in stone. It's let's see how it works and make sure that it's good for everyone. And I forgot what else I was gonna say.
We can go back to.
I would just like to say, I can remember twenty years ago when my children first started in schools here in Madison. We went here for the schools as well and. It, you know, we're very excited. And then they changed the model. Where Brown was going to be five, six and Paulson seven, eight. And I can remember how we were. Very panicked about all the transitions and how are they, it's just so much. And once they get settled into Brown, they're going to have to move them to Paulson and then again to the high school. And I. I remember how much anxiety that gave us and how it ended up really working out so well for our children. And so. Sometimes when change happens, it does feel like a hair shirt. It's a little, you know. A little concerning and itchy and just like, ah, you know, but it's amazing how adaptable children are and how. Much joy they bring to what we see in black and white and having been an educator for thirty five years, I can say. I've I've worked in so many different models and this model is really a lovely way for. You know, little littles to be with some bickers, you know, and some mediums. And so it's really. I have lots of faith that this is going to be a really wonderful experience for our kids.
Thank you, Kathy. Seth, are you still coming?
Yeah, thank you, Galen. Just a few observations and notes that I wanted to add to this. And. I've been thanking the administration over and over again for their sensitivity here. You know, I I'm happy that the school community and parents, guardians spoke up. When they were concerned, but in that vein, I I would like to point out that. We we start from a good place. And most of the communications we received as a board and that the administration received were very respectful and very. On point. You know, this whole situation got out of the bag ahead of when it was supposed to. And I think that added an element of surprise and shock for the parents' community in particular, and for some of the students, I'm sure as well. But I just want people to use this as an example going forward. Where I think that the district, the board, both work as a team and with sensitivity to the community's needs. In all things. And even though the board felt that this was not a matter of curriculum, so therefore. It's not an area for its direct domain. You know, we shared our concerns along with the parents to the administration and to their great credit. The administration, which has always been all about holistic education and not just teaching to a test. For a long time now, we've been that way. To their great credit, under Dr. Cook's leadership. They were already talking about, well, okay, how can we adjust the original plan to to add more related arts back in? So I think this is a success and I think it illustrates a model that this board and this district have pursued together for a long time. I think that's one of the reasons why we receive accolades as a board, as a district, several of our schools. All of our schools last year were named schools of distinction. You know, we we tend to get it right. And it's because we care and because we take parental concerns and holistic education into account. I'm not trying to pat anyone on the back. I'm just trying to hopefully level set so that next time there's an issue, especially if it, you know, if if. If the news gets out there before we have an opportunity to provide proper context and hold meetings. That people trust that we have the community's best interests in mind, both as a board and as a district. And we do tend to to generally get it right. I agree with Emily and Kathy. Not everybody's going to be a hundred percent happy. With this newer model, but it certainly offers a lot more in related arts than probably any, but definitely more than most. You know, four or five peer schools across the state. And I I think it'll work out really well. I'm a theater dad, so I get it. And I was happy to see theater added back in. And my inclination the whole time was, yeah, let's see if we can get related arts back in. But again, I chose to put my faith. In the process and I think the process worked well. Again, we all thanked the parent community for your input. That was very important to us. And I know it was important to the administration as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
But I remember I was gonna say real quick. So just to point out that by increasing the related arts, the way that. Hopefully make the parents and students happy, it does increase the budget by a hundred and twenty one thousand. So that. The change goes from a two point two seven increase to a two point four six increase. And so I hope that when the budget, if when the budget passes Board of Selectment and Board of Finance, that the parents will then support this increase because we. Did what you wanted.
Anybody else like to? Well, we have now would be the time for public participation. Emily will give us the guidelines. I think we have some people online, but Emily.
So we welcome public comment at our meetings, whether you're joining us in person or on Zoom. We ask when you speak to state your name and address. Comments are limited to. Three minutes. I'll let you know when your time is up. As always, we're happy to hear from our community, but meetings such as this are not a time for discussion. So it shouldn't be expected that the board or administration will respond to questions at this time, but rather you may be contacted after the meeting. So if you're joining us in person, you just can raise your hand and I'll call upon you. And if you're joining us on Zoom, raise your hand on Zoom and we'll call upon you on Zoom. So we'll start. Is there anyone in person who would like to speak? Yes.
I'm Maureen Burke. I live at two thirty Cops Road. I wrote this out because it's really intimidating to talk to. It scares me. Okay, so first, I'd like to thank Dr. Cook for listening to family concerns and making adjustments to the fourth and fifth grade related arts offerings for next year. I'm sure it was more than just inconvenient to revise the budget in a week's time. Also, thank you to the Board of Ed for for being receptive to family concerns and to the late budget changes. I'm not a hundred percent satisfied. I wish next year's fourth graders would be able to have more of the same experiences that this year's fourth graders have. But I do appreciate the adjustments made to Spanish for all and to theater and music for the fifth graders next year. But second, I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask the superintendent's office and the Board of Ed to consider how we can improve this process of the family involvement going forward. We did end up with an outcome that most people seem satisfied with, but it could have been otherwise, and that would have been to our kids' detriment. But for a person, but for some person to have who was characterized as a leaker recently, I've heard that term. The last week was mentioned. recently, I've heard that term, the last week was mentioned with the PTO meeting at Jeffrey by someone in charge. Um, I don't really like this term for it all. It has negative implications. But I'm extremely, and I was also extremely grateful for this person for having reached out actually to me. That aside, in the absence of a so-called leaker, how do parents learn about the dress, about drastic changes planned for their kids' education? I think it has to be more than telling us to attend Board of Ed meetings. I for one would not have interpreted a point eight reduction in Spanish FTEs meaning as to mean that my kids would experience a sixty percent reduction in their Spanish instruction. One of the board members said last week in the Budget Committee meeting, which I listened into, that he welcomed parent engagement in this process. So I would ask all of you how this process can be more transparent and welcoming of such engagement.
Anyone online who would like to speak or something, raise your hand. Yes.
Hi, Beth, you can go ahead and unmute.
All right. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes, hi.
Hi, actually, um, this is, thank you. Good evening. My name is Matt Azaveta and my wife Beth and I live at eighty one Silo Hill. We've got two kids, one at Ryerson, one at Brown. We wanted to thank you for hearing all of our concerns and feedback and revising the plan for fourth and fifth graders. You've noted in an updated plan that the decision regarding the students switching groups or mixing classes for related arts is still to be determined. We want to speak up tonight about this concern and to please have you consider keeping the mixing of the kids and students in their related arts classes the way it is today, mixed. Developmentally, fourth and fifth graders are ready and able to make shuffling classes a positive influence during their school days. And it helps develop their social skills by having them interact with a wider peer group. Mixing students from different classes can foster collaboration, address social dynamics and provide important peer learning opportunities. It also helps provide relief for some kids that may need a break from conflict and don't thrive in one class all day. Having the mix within their related arts classes allows the kids to make new friends, avoid cliques and gives breaks from disruptive, potential disruptive behaviors. We also have been hearing from many friends with older children in Madison that the shuffling of classes also helps them to be better prepared for the mixing in Poulsen and Daniel High Schools. It offers a nice transition to those upper, upper classes. Here are some student quotes from letters they wrote regarding the matter of mixing in the classes. The following is from Emma, now a sixth grader. Quote, "The way things are done now is the best way, in my opinion, because we get to mix up who we are with throughout the day. Being able to see my friends throughout the day made it so I wanted to go to school and helped me pay attention. It also helps with getting to know more people in your grade." Unquote. From Vanessa, currently a fourth grader, quote, "I don't like how we may have to stay in one class all day. I would really like being able to get to walk out in halls and be able to see friends in different classes." Unquote. From Madeline, currently a fourth grader, quote, "The biggest thing I am disappointed about is not switching the group of kids I am with. I feel like this has been the best year of my school time and one of the biggest reasons is that we switch up who we are with during the day. Knowing that I could lose that privilege makes me feel less prepared for Poulsen and Hand. Imagine you were in my shoes, going from Brown, where it is amazing, back to elementary school and losing some of the amazing freedom we gained in fourth grade at Brown. The added freedom at Brown has given me confidence and made school more fun." Unquote. Thank you for listening. We encourage you to keep the mixing of classes as part of the new proposed plan as it is currently an important developmental aspect for fourth and fifth graders. Thanks, everyone.
Right. Anyone in person would like to speak? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is John Huffman. I live at fifty six Cedar Drive. I have two children in public, in Madison Public Schools, including a current fourth grader. I, I am certainly pleased that the revisions have been made to restore some of the cuts to related arts. That's certainly preferable to the draft plan from the end of last year. A few points, and it's not very super coherent, but parallel was drawn earlier to discomfort when the Brown model was introduced and people being uncertain about kids would handle, how would handle transitions and things like this. And respectfully, this is a very different case. This is not a matter of worrying about whether our kids may or may not be able to handle fairly indefinite things like increased transitions. It's a matter of very concrete and clear cuts in teaching certain subjects. So just so we're clear on that. Secondly, when it comes to the matter of communication and openness and how this process, if it happens again, can be improved in future. I, I know it's been put out there in, in recent times that you know, the parents were jumping the gods and based on, say, leaked information or something. But as I understand the timeline, including as presented here tonight, it was not proposed to communicate any of this to the parents until after budget had been approved. So this would have been a matter not of consulting the parents, asking for input. This would have been a matter of telling the parents what was going to happen. And that is hardly the same thing as parents having an opportunity to offer input. Additionally, this, I continue to be baffled by the reiterated point tonight that the board somehow convinced themselves that things like cutting entire subjects or cutting other subjects by sixty percent are not curriculum changes. How these do not fall under board purview and certainly under the curriculum committee's purview. And you don't have the open bylaws, but the bylaws sure make it clear that cuts and deletions from the curriculum fall under their purview. I would like to, I would encourage the board to consider rethinking this for future purposes. And finally, I am similarly mystified as after all of this, I have yet to hear a single real explanation for why any of these changes were necessary to begin with. And I, again, find that kind of baffling and I would encourage the board and the administrative team to be more transparent about explaining to parents why these changes are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone online would like to speak. So raise your hand. See none online. Would anyone in person like to speak? We'll come back. Sorry. Well, go ahead. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Natalie. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Natalie Hasselhoff. I live at thirty five Lenore Drive and I would like to echo what was just so eloquently stated about the concerns specifically about the lack of explanation of why these changes were made initially. I listened to the meeting last week with the budget review. It didn't seem like this was specifically motivated for cost-saving perspective from a cost-saving perspective. And now with the, with the addition or the reincorporation of some of the related arts, I understand that there was an increase in the budget. But as someone who is not involved in town finances or any type of administrative, administrative efforts, I would think that with the planning of a new building, that staffing changes to accommodate the, the new building and the splitting of the fourth and fifth grades would have been a consideration when the budget for this project was started at the outset. Again, I appreciate the flexibility and the reception of all the public's comments. And while this new schedule is a significant improvement from what was discussed last week, I'm sure as you know, that they're impossible to satisfy everyone. I guess I fall in that latter camp. And do appreciate the effort by everyone to make these improvements and hopefully they will continue to improve in the future.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, good evening, everybody. I'm Dennis Fulby from four fifty four Bartlett Drive in Madison. I have a fourth grader currently and a first grader. And I mean, everybody here was so eloquent in their, their comments. I don't need to touch on any of that. I think there is certainly some, something left to be done, but I am also very, you know, I'm very conflicted here. I'm very appreciative of the swift action that the administration, the board, everybody took with respect to, to parents' comments. Obviously, we had some huge concerns. We voiced them as a group, as a community. It worked. We, you know, we, we got some of what we were looking for. But I also am devastated to see that we are still losing so much of what we have now. And I think that's where everybody's concern still lies is how could we lose so much? Given that we built an entirely new school, we've renovated another school, we had these grandiose plans. Of course, the public did not think about what does a building mean for my child's education. The other thing to, to point out, and the reason why I'm here is because I am a new parent of a Brown student. Meaning I just came to Brown. There are many parents who don't even know the magic of Brown. And it is truly magic and I couldn't put my finger on it until I walked through those doors. I met the theater teacher. I saw my son shine on that stage and I understood how it applies to the profile of a graduate. And I was completely touched and I literally said to my wife and my mother-in-law, who all attended this, this ensemble, and not everybody has a chance to do it because it is split up into the year, but believe me, when they do, they will also be equally impressed. I turned to them and I said, this is why we are in this town. And this is, by the way, in September, when it happened. I said, this is why we're in this town. This is why we can brag to our other friends and, and family members who are in other towns that number one may, may have had this, but it certainly was cut a long, long time ago due to budget. And I said, thank God, our town is funded to the point where this does not have to be cut. I spoke those words. It had nothing to do with this meeting or any of this. It was all before. And so I think that's just an example of what we felt we got ripped from us when this was changed. Okay, that's just one example. Spanish is another example of why the magic at Brown is so great. You know, music, all those things, coding, steam. I know we're getting some of them back. But we're certainly losing something as well and that needs to be acknowledged. I am again appreciative, but it, it has to be pointed out that we are losing something. We had something great at Brown. We're losing a good chunk of that while we're happy that it, some of it's coming back. It's still very, very difficult to swallow. And then I'll just echo what, what my peers here have also said. We do question, is this it? Is this all we're going to get? Do we have a chance of changing anything? We don't necessarily fully understand the rationale for why a building changes the type of education our kids receive. So we urge you to tell us why that matters. Why can't, why didn't we build a building that had enough gym space to have a high level of PE for all of our students? Why didn't we utilize the theater in the two buildings to its full capacity? Why didn't we do all the things we needed to do to keep the magic at Brown? So again, I urge you to please give us the information. Please help us to understand how we can be more involved so it doesn't feel like we are surprised and find out because of a budget meeting, why a curriculum change has happened. Thank you.
Back to our online friends. Anyone online would like to speak at this time? Give me a minute to raise your hand. Sorry for. I don't see any hands raised online. Anyone else in person? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jessica Wyland and I live at fifty three Dairy Hung Road. I, I, I would like to say, you know, I think where the curriculum ended up is, is at a satisfactory place. What I was told is the reason why the related arts have been decreased is that there will be an increased instructional time for both science and social studies. And I think that there's a real opportunity here that, that nobody's talking about. And, and I think that that's too bad, which is there's a real opportunity to revamp and enhance the science and social studies curriculum, which, which in my opinion, I've got a, a fourth grader and a first grader has been somewhat lackluster. Just this week, my fourth grader science class consisted of watching a YouTube video of Bill Nye, the Science Guy. And my first grader's social studies curriculum consisted of reading a Scholastic newsletter. There's so much opportunity here for project-based learning and really innovative, exciting ways to engage kids in these subjects instead of the kind of rote and, you know, boring ways that I've seen done. And, and that's not to discount everything. I've certainly seen some innovative curriculum woven in, but there's a real opportunity with this increased instructional time to make the curriculum more engaging and more hands-on for our kids. And I think that that will make the loss of some of the related arts more palatable to parents if they know that they're really getting you know, a better quality science and social studies instruction. The other thing I just want to make a quick plug for, I really hope with the reconfiguration of the computer class, that we can retain the digital literacy curriculum, which is so vital and sparked so many fantastic conversations between my fourth grade son and I. I'd love to see this not only kept in fourth and fifth grade, but you know, kept at a developmentally appropriate level for younger grades too, because that's such a crucial skill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Okay, no. Anyone else in person who would like to speak at this time? All right. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Emily. Left and we will continue on with the agenda. Our next action item is a motion to approve the donation of Poulsen Middle School in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, eighty one cents from steady photography for student activity use. So, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Diane. Uh, it's very generous. We have great support. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing done. All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Opposed, none. No extensions, motion carries nine, nothing. And then we have a, a similar motion to approve a donation to Brown Intermediate School in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and four dollars, forty-two cents from steady photography for student activity use.
Sure.
Thank you, Diane.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Kathy. Once again, it's very generous. Do we have any comments?
Thank you.
All right. So all in favor? Subsections, that motion also carries nine, nothing. Next up is action item number seven. We're looking for a motion to approve a donation to Jeffrey Elementary School in the amount of four thousand, five hundred dollars from the Jeffrey PTO to offset the cost of school field trips.
Sure.
All right. Second, anybody? Thank you, Diane. Once again, just wonderful support. It's very discussional.
Thank you to the Jeffrey PTO and soon they will become something else. So use, use up that money so that your money follows your kids.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, none. Nine, nothing in favor. Thank you. All right. Then we have a few procedural things. Next up is action item number eight, which is a motion approved in minutes for the January seventh, twenty twenty five Board of Education meeting.
So.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Emily.
Second.
That was, thank you. I'll just, well, is there any discussion or extensions? Okay, all right. So let's call, call vote. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, none, also carries nine, nothing. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Education special meeting?
So.
Diane?
Second.
Kathy? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Opposed, none, extensions, no extensions. Nothing. Hits keep coming. Item ten. Motion to approve the minutes of the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Education budget workshop.
So.
Thank you, Emily.
Second.
Thank you, Diane. But have they passed any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Attention, hearing none, motion carries nine, nothing. Would anybody like to contribute future agenda items?
Yes, again, good, thanks. You know, I'd like to see a discussion of potential extended day programming. There have been some peripheral references to possibilities for that. Just a generic conversation of what may or may not be possible.
I have one.
Yeah, you can figure it out. You can press that one.
It's actually more of a, an update request. So last budget season, we ended up somehow funding for new band uniforms. I'm just wondering, like, did they get them? Did they use them this season or is it next season? I forget how they applied it. I'd love to see the new band uniform. Me too, as compared to the last. We'd like to see it.
All right, Mary.
I would like to know what we're gonna have or put on the agenda, the next discussion about cell phones. I know we got it to it a little bit, but we haven't really discussed that.
Okay. Thank you. Jeez. All right.
Well, I have one more.
Oh, sorry.
Well, we have talked about fire every, every, you're having an update on the safety measures. That we have in the school. We've had one since the age two, so.
Yeah.
That would be.
Okay. That would, yeah.
Right.
That comes later, it's going to.
That's on the dock. That's on the dock for later. Is it on, I'm trying to, I, don't I say? Okay. And the.
Yeah, I just, I, I would just say in response to that, that we do have a, a safety update, a security update on the docket for, I think in the spring. It, it largely has to be discussed in executive session, but it's on there. And then the one thing that I just thought about that I really should have asked Craig, and I forgot to. We usually, at this time of year with the upcoming legislative, well, with the legislative session, we usually get an update from our legislators, so maybe we can reserve a little time in one of our meetings for our, for a legislative update from our state rep and, and state senator.
I don't know.
All right.
The hits really do. We had also, we had also talked about, I know that. I know that's, I, I know that Scott Murphy had showed up, had come at one of our meetings. It would be good to have him.
Okay. Okay.
Or. But they're probably just doing this budget now. So, yeah, but. You know.
We're trying to play this on.
Yes, thank you.
Galen, if I may, just chime in. He's been offered invitations to attend to.
Yeah.
Working on that at a door. Just can't always make it. And the state representatives of the state legislatures typically come in May, so they can tell us what they've actually done in the legislature.
Yeah.
Will come in January.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, so.
They can look at that in May. It's no problem. All right.
And I'm not lying.
All right. Those are all great suggestions.
I don't. I think we've, we've talked about this a lot, and I mean, we'll continue to talk about it, but just based on the feedback, and I think it's, and it's always be thinking is, you know, how do we engage parents and family members in our community more? And we've, I mean, we've talked about this for as long as I've been on the board. And it's challenging, you know, at one point we had school liaisons, or we have the PTOs, we have the PRCs. But you know, as someone mentioned, board meetings aren't always accessible, and so I don't have an answer to it, but I just think we should always be thinking about how we can, you know.
It always makes someone feel so much better if they, I mean, in this case, if you find out things online and or just random, drugs, you know, grocery store.
Right.
It's so much better to have some sort of trend and transparency is it?
Yeah.
It's the key.
Yeah. And we have so many resources, you know.
We're all working for the same thing.
Right. So how we can make that connection, I think, is something for us to consider. Maybe that could be a goal for next year when we do our board goals or something.
Right.
Like, think about that.
Don't we have one of those meetings coming up?
Yeah, we do that some point. Our board retreat. That's typically in fall, I think, isn't it, or summer?
I think there was some one coming up in the spring. Am I right? Just do one in September, whether or not you want to look at your board mission and goals in the spring, but we can have that conversation when Dr. Cook's here to leave that.
Okay. I think you have more. I do, I do love when, I mean, we always, we all feel this way that when there's, there's public participation, and especially when kids are allowed to have their voices heard, and they're encouraged by teachers and parents to come and speak up. I think that that's wonderful, and I think it really does add value. And we all feel very strong about that, with them. We want to give them that.
And sometimes though, we know, like Diane said, can't please everyone. But at least that they all hear that we're, we hear them and that we're working as hard as we can to get it to where, you know, most everyone is, is, it's helpful. Or at least satisfied.
And to that point, I hope the people who are here catch the tail end of this meeting because they'll see that they had an impact.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All really good suggestions, going once, going twice. All right. May I please have a motion to adjourn at five fifty-four?
So.
Thank you, Maureen. Very adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Gal.
Thank you all. Bye.